Welcome, everybody, to the Thursday, November 4th, formal meeting of the Iowa City Planning and Zoning Commission.
She doesn't want to do that.
Tonight, I see in attendance all commissioners, except for Padron, and if she comes in, I will make sure we add that to the minutes. First item up on the agenda is public discussion of any item not on the agenda. If there's a member of the public who'd like to address the commission on an item that's not listed on tonight's agenda, now is your opportunity. If you'd like to speak, please come up to the podium. Second call for public input. Seeing none, we'll go on to the next item. Next item is item number four on the agenda. South District Self-Supporting Municipal Improvement District. This is a discussion of the merit and feasibility of a petition submitted to establish a self-supported municipal improvement district for property located within the Pepperwood Plaza area, zone community commercial, intensive commercial, generally south of Highway 6 West, north of Cross Park Avenue, along both sides of Keokuk Street, and west of Broadway Street, except Casey's, which is also included. And whose item is this?
Wendy Ford is going to present this item.
All right, Wendy, you're up.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Wendy Ford. I'm the Economic Development Coordinator at the city. The city received, and city council has forwarded for your review, a petition to establish a SMID, a self-supporting municipal improvement district, in the South Business District, generally centered around the Pepperwood Plaza area, as Mark had described. The petition requests the creation of the South District Self-Supporting Municipal Improvement District, or I'll call it a SMID from now on, as defined by Iowa Code, Chapter The code requires the Planning and Zoning Commission to review the petition for its merit and feasibility, and that's what you're here tonight to do. And we've put together some points to help you do that. Submission of the petition is the first step in the process to establish a SMID. The petition had to reach a couple of different thresholds of signatures. One is that it had to have 25% of the property owners within the area sign the petition, and they had to represent at least 25% of the assessed value of the proposed district. Upon staff review, we discovered that 25% of the property owners had signed a petition, and they represented 27.2% of the assessed value in the area. A SMID is a self-imposed additional taxing district that will levy a tax on properties within the specified area. All those areas in the Pepperwood Plaza area are generally, currently, I should say, Zone CC2, with a few properties at CI1. The SMID will be established for the purpose of paying for the administration and operational expenses of the proposed district, as defined by law. State code allows for the SMID to levy taxes for three purposes within a SMID district, and this SMID proposes only the levy of operational taxes for the following purposes: to have a pool of funds for marketing, business retention, and attraction; to make physical or other improvements designed to enhance the image and appearance of the proposed district, which could include things like lighting, seasonal and decorative enhancements, signage, landscaping, et cetera; and, thirdly, to hire an executive director, and if needed, and with enough funds, hire other support staff as well, who would work to manage the work the board had, the board of the SMID had established. In the SMID petition, the rate of taxation, additional taxes assessed on each property, is stated as not to exceed $5 per $1,000 of assessed value for a period of five years, and that would begin in July of 2022. At this rate, with the properties in the specified area, that would raise approximately $104,000 a year. Following the receipt of the Planning and Zoning Commission's report of the merits of this value and feasibility, city council would then set a public hearing and do a mailing to all the residents or addresses within the property, and property area, I should say, the boundaries, and then hold a public hearing, and the final step would be to adopt an ordinance establishing the taxing district for this SMID. So it's quite procedural, and this is step one. Let's see here. The ordinance implementing the SMID at the end, when this part of the procedure is done, would contain certain operational mechanics in an agreement for, that would stipulate how the South District Board would work with the city in carrying out the work of the SMID. The SMID Board, then, would be made up of representatives of the SMID area, and in this case, there would be two property owners, or the representatives from a single property within the district, that had an assessed value equal to 1% or more of the total assessed value in the area. Similarly, there would be two properties from the area whose assessed value is worth less, or property, I should say, is worth less than 1% of the total assessed value in that area. There would be two owners of property with, that lease more than 3,000 square feet for their business, and two from business owners within the area that lease less than 3,000 square feet for their business. And lastly, there would be one from the Pepperwood Plaza Parking Association, another entity there, and there may be up to four other stakeholders in the proposed district, who would also be voting members of the district, and there will very likely be ex officio non-voting board members from groups such as the Black Voices Project, Johnson County Interfaith Coalition, LULAC, the Iowa City Area Business Partnership, ICAD, and the City of Iowa City. There will also be a SMID Advisory Board, a subset of the board of the SMID, that will be responsible for advising city council on the SMID activities and making an annual request for a budget to the city council. The Advisory Board, in this case, would consist of the Executive Committee of the SMID Board, and that is similar to, it's exactly the way the Iowa City Downtown District SMID functions as well. Okay, other considerations for you in evaluating merit and feasibility are contained in here. Let's see. And those are, let me get to the right page. Always get in trouble when I staple things. Several questions, the first of which is whether the property in the proposed district meets all of the criteria established in the law, specifically that it be comprised of contiguous properties zoned for commercial or industrial uses, and be located wholly within the boundaries of the city; that it be given a descriptive name containing the words "self-supporting municipal improvement district," and that it be comprised of property related in some manner. And we find that the proposed district is comprised of contiguous property, is zoned for commercial use, and it is within the boundaries of the city. The petition states that the proposed district is entitled the South District Self-Supportive Municipal Improvement District, and finally, the property within the proposed district is related in that it is physically located in Iowa City, is contiguous, and serves as a commercial hub for the community. A second consideration would be whether the petition submitted is sufficiently clear and contains the requisite number of signatures from property owners representing the necessary assessed value. And it does. Staff had reviewed the petition and verifies the signatures of the 25% of all the owners representing 27.2% of the property in that area. Let me just put a map up here. I meant to do that a little earlier.
Hey, Ray, could you hit that light switch back there for the...
There we go. I'll not talk to anything specific on that map yet, but I thought that might be helpful to have up.
Isn't...
It's over here.
It's over here.
The one on the far right, Maria. Other one.
This one?
There you go.
Thank you.
That one. So another consideration is whether the petition sufficiently describes the boundaries of the district and provides a consolidated description of the property contained therein, and it does. You'll probably note the legal description contained within the petition. Another consideration is whether a maximum rate of tax that may be imposed within the district and the purposes for which it may be levied are set forth, and it is. It is stated in the petition that $5 per 1,000 of value will be that tax rate. Another consideration, whether the purpose of the district is adequately described, as well as any improvements that might happen within the district. And as stated earlier, the purpose of the district is to provide new, additional, or enhanced services within the district. In particular, revenues collected for the proposed district operating fund may be used for the following, and I mentioned these before, but I think this is important because this is the purpose of a self-supporting or SMID district. Development and management of activities in support of marketing, business retention, and attraction; physical or other improvements designed to enhance the image and appearance of the proposed district; and, thirdly, to hire an executive director, and if needed, other support staff to carry out the work of the board. Another consideration is whether the proposed district or improvements would conflict in any way with existing laws, plans, or city policies, including comp plans, zoning ordinances, local or regional development plans, et cetera. The operational functions and marketing that can occur under the proposed district don't appear to conflict with any of the plans, laws, or policies already in effect. The proposed district does overlap with the existing Highway 6 commercial urban renewal area, which sunsets in 2025. As proposed, the SMID petition does not conflict with the goals or the purposes of the Highway 6 commercial urban renewal area. The SMID district also falls into the newly established highway, sorry, highway commercial urban revitalization area, which allows for a three-year, 100% property tax exemption on eligible improvements to building value. That also doesn't conflict with the goals of the SMID going on. And finally, it is noted, like it is in, or like it was in the petition for the SMID in downtown Iowa City, that notwithstanding the fact that a part of the proposed SMID district is located within the Highway 6 commercial district, should there be a TIF project evolved prior to 2025, and that's, I suppose, fairly doubtful, but should there be one, TIF financing to the developer would not include the $5 per 1,000 SMID levy. Rather, that would flow to the SMID, the South District SMID. Another consideration is whether the taxes proposed, if any, will be sufficient to pay the anticipated costs and other expenses. We looked at the property valuations as they are now, applied the current consolidated tax rate at 90% valuation that is taxed, and came up with $104,000 per year. Now, that's likely due to increase every other year as revaluations occur. Another consideration is whether the formation of the district is consistent with or in furtherance of other identifiable city policies or goals. The comp plan notes the importance of thriving retail centers for sustaining residential neighborhoods and employment centers. Neighborhood commercial centers can provide a focal point and gathering place and be within convenient walking distance for residents of the area. The South District Plan states a goal to encourage and support residents, neighborhood associations, and business and property owners to advocate for continued improvement of South Side neighborhoods, in keeping with the goals of the comp plan. And it's evident that that neighborhood is carrying that goal out by coming to city council with a petition to establish the SMID. The proposed district petition also states that one of the purposes of the SMID is to provide physical enhancements or beautification, and to improve the image and appearance of the proposed district, which all align directly with comp plans and district plans as well. So finally, the review, your review, on the merits and feasibility of the proposed district should and could consider the above points, and should focus on ensuring that the petition meets the requirements of Iowa Code, Chapter 386, and that the operational activities of the proposed district are appropriate and in relation to existing laws and plans and policies, and that the means to implement the proposal appear reasonably calculated to accomplish the proposed district. So in this context, staff recommends the proposed district petition be recommended for approval and forwarded, along with your evaluative review for its merit and feasibility, to the city council for their consideration. And I'd take any questions if you had them.
All right. Thank you, Wendy. Now's the opportunity for commissioners to ask questions of staff on this issue, and if the record could reflect that Commissioner Padron is present for the meeting. Wendy, I thought your report was well-stated. It says that we should evaluate, well, we may evaluate eight different items, and I just, can I just have your assurance that the petition meets those requirements as stated in Iowa Code 386?
Yes, and it was also reviewed by the city attorney's office.
Very good. More questions by members of the commission for staff?
I have a question. I'm just curious why, I know that 25% is what they need. Did they just stop at 27%? Or is there 100% support in that neighborhood? Why isn't there 100?
That might be a question for the advocates who took the petition out. I will tell you, however, that if you'd like to compare in the South District petition with the Downtown District, the Downtown District reached in the 30s and in the 40% level, so there was nowhere near 100%, and I don't think they touched 50 on the first go-around.
Got it. And obviously, I know that the city would give us any negative letters as well. I just want to make sure, because all of these letters are positive, there were no negatives.
None of those last ones, no.
Great. Other than downtown Iowa City, is, do we have other SMID districts here?
Not in Iowa City. There are several across the state, though.
Got it. Thanks.
Any other questions?
I have a couple of questions. What percentage of that $104,000 is going to be geared towards the executive director that you're hiring and their staff?
They have budgeted $65,000 a year for a full-time executive director. So that would be a little more than 65%.
And the staff, that staff person?
The first year, only, the budget for the first year only includes the executive director.
And that tax would be assessed to all the businesses in that district?
Yeah, all commercial property within the district, and the district borders are in the navy blue around the map there.
Even though only 25% have been...
Yes.
...canvassed?
Yeah.
Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll open this up to the public for a public comment. If there's anybody in the audience who would like to address the commission and give a comment on this proposal, please come forward. Please make sure you state your name, and if it's not something that's easily spellable, if you'd spell it for the minute taker, please.
Awesome. Thank you. Hi, my name's Angie Jordan. I am on Apple Court off of Broadway Street in the South District. Some other hats that I wear that I always take with me, is I'm the president of the South District Neighborhood Association, and also a co-founder of it. I'm also a tri-chair of the Project Better Together 2030 Steering Committee, and I am, most importantly, a South District resident. I submitted my positive stuff in your packet, so I'm not going to restate those things, but something I think is really important for everyone to know is that this project was spearheaded by the people of the South District. This wasn't necessarily an idea of, hmm, how can we make businesses? This was, the context of it was in neighborhood revitalization, which over the past three years, our Neighborhood Association has spearheaded efforts that I think go above and beyond a lot of what is expected of a neighborhood association in general, but that's events, that's markets, that's initiatives, that's bringing together our extremely dense human service providers on that side of town, that's also capturing voices of people who speak lots of different languages, are of different socioeconomic levels, and also along different political spectrums as well. Part of our initiative to revitalize neighborhood three years ago in the beginning was to reach out to businesses. I, as a layperson, have no idea at the beginning what all that jargon was with the SMID, and we had to educate ourselves as leadership, but also sell, educate, and continually bring this up to what it is to the residents of our neighborhood, which currently wasn't being done by anyone, just putting that out there. So it was very grassroots level. It's a way to support our ideas. It's also, some things that came up that I want to make sure I kind of touch on is the South District Neighborhood Association, its origins are in collaboration. It was founded because Pepperwood Association, Grant Wood Association, Weatherby and South Point decided, hey, we've got the same challenges and issues. Why don't we bring things together and share some assets, so we can do this sustainably? So that's already in our blood in that neighborhood. The other thing, too, is reaching out to the commercial property owners, again, three years before the SMID, way before ARPA funding ever was anything, way before the pandemic was kicking our butts. I don't know if I have a time limit to speak, but I'm just going to keep going until I finish, so cut me off if I need to be cut off, but it was so hard to engage the business and commercial. A lot of them aren't from our neighborhood, a lot of them don't live in the neighborhood, some don't even live in the state. So engaging them, we got really excited when we just found out somebody answered the phone or maybe replied, emailed us. That was three years ago. Since the SMID and conversations around it, we've already had success in figuring out who are the folks that are commercial property owners. Again, nobody's done that, that I'm aware of. Our Neighborhood Association and the people did that. And in bringing people together, we didn't all have the same, we didn't always agree on everything, and that's good and okay, but some of the same stuff kept coming up for the commercial property owners. And the negative things that you'd be like, well, they're against the SMID, those are precious jewels of information that I believe a SMID could be taking care of, and taking care of those that maybe right now don't understand the benefits of the SMID around safety, crime, aesthetics, lack of resources. We don't have money to pay into the SMID. All those things that people are concerned about as commercial property owners, they've been neglected to in the South District. Here's a chance to create a vehicle through a SMID. It's a tool to empower those commercial property owners that's informed by the folks in the neighborhood, right? So again, I just need to contextualize that a little bit. The other thing, and I'm, don't quote me on this, but as I understand, the budget, the executive director, I believe the board, once it's formed, has to then say $65,000 goes to the executive director. So that's not set in stone. It was proposed, that's something that we put together. But if the board decides they don't want to pay the executive director that, that's on them to decide. Similarly, with the projects, it's on them to decide. And then the 25%, that's a great question. I wish more people would give input. You guys all know this story. And they're coming out of the woodwork, but there's no way to capture their voices, collect them, and do things. So I hear you on not having the high threshold. We made it just right there, totally acknowledging it. And you have to start somewhere. So I just want to put all that out there. I'm also available for questions. Angie Jordan, thank you all for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Angie. You even got bonus time, because I forgot to start my timer, so.
I was thinking, where are you going to sit?
No, it's the liquid. The longest five minutes I've ever... I know it, I know it.
Good evening. My name is Karen Cubby, and I'm here representing the Iowa City Downtown District, which is the board that works on the SMID issues in downtown. Nancy Byrd could not be here tonight, but I am on the Board of Directors. I'm the chair of the Legislative Committee, and I was on the committee that did the original successful SMID downtown and the renewal, so I understand what Angie's going through intimately. There are five things that are really important to me to come together to make a successful improvement district, and some of them are part of that merit and feasibility pieces of it, that the petition is there, that the language meets the letter of the law, but it's also important that there's extra things in that petition, like saying that the city should not reduce current investment in the services provided to that area, so that the SMID money doesn't have to be used to replace tax dollars, that it's additional resources. And the TIF piece of it is really critical, because as projects are supported by the taxpayers through the TIF, the SMID still needs to service those increased businesses and capacity that's in there, so they really do need that TIF money. The signature piece of it, this is one of the really savvy things the Iowa Legislature actually has done. There's a lot of things I wouldn't say that about, but this means that you have to have a lot of small businesses or property owners buying into this and large ones. You can't have one or the other, you have to have both. And so the 25% is what the law says you have to have, and it can be very hard on a first try to do that. The timeframe of this, of being five years, is long enough to actually be accountable for what the goals in the petition state. If you did two or three years, you don't have time to really create momentum and get your work going, but it's short enough that if it doesn't work, the property owners will say, no, we're not going to renew. And so it's a really nice timeframe for that. But there are a couple of other things that are really important to have that aren't part of the merit and feasibility. One of them is that these signatures are from property owners, who are going to pass on the cost to the businesses. I pay about $600 a year extra in taxes, and that's maybe two little adds in the DI, but instead, my little $600 leverage is a million dollars of marketing and cleanliness and safety and programming that I could not leverage on my own as an individual business. This is really powerful stuff. And there are businesses who are really on board with this. The diversity of the board is really important in terms of who's going to be accountable for living out these goals, and having larger properties, smaller properties, bigger businesses, smaller businesses, and all the stakeholders of community organizations and nonprofit, that is a really nice soup that's really tangy and substantial and can make things work. And then you have to have champions. The fifth thing is you have to have champions, like Angie, like Midwest One Bank, like Southgate Development, all the businesses that have signed those petitions, and it's that energy that will create momentum. How can you not be motivated after you hear Angie talk about this and be excited? So the other piece of it is, I know we had a lot of people in the downtown who didn't want to sign the petition because they didn't want money going for staff. Well, before the downtown district, we had the downtown association, where a few of us gave $250 a year, and we were doing all the work, and we didn't have enough money to do anything. And with the SMID, even though maybe 30% of the people signed it, everyone paid in and everyone benefited from it. And so what my hope is, what happens in the downtown district with a different flavor, because South Side is a different neighborhood than downtown, is that when it's up for renewal, it goes to 40%, because people who kind of poo-pooed it or were afraid of it or not supportive and didn't see the value have felt the value. So this is a great thing. I hope that you provide strong support and forward this to the city council, and that they pass it, and let's get to work. Thanks.
Karen, can I, may I ask you a question? You may have, you may have already stated this, but were there any lessons learned now from the downtown SMID, since you're a business owner and a board member?
Yeah, I think one of them was having all those ex officio non-voting members around the table was critical for collaboration, so that was one thing. Another thing is that even though the Tree Hugger program was not the most important thing, it was low-hanging fruit, it was highly visible, it was super fun, and it helped create momentum. So I think planning for that low-hanging fruit is really important, and that helps you get the bigger, harder things done. Those are two things that come to mind really quickly.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Marlen Mendoza, M-A-R-L-E-N-M-E-N-D-O-Z-A. I'm here representing the League of United Latin American Citizens, or LULAC, Council 308 here in Iowa City. And between Karen, Wendy, and Angie, there's not much to say, so I'm going to keep it very short. The South District, the South Side of Iowa City, as many of you know, is one of the most highly dense and diverse places of all the city. And we understand that the main location here, the main hub, is downtown, the downtown district. We're very excited for this proposal because we want to bring people out to explore different sides of the city, come down to the South Side, look at who lives there, look at the amazing diverse amount of entrepreneurs, small businesses, that we are hoping to help and revitalize through this initiative. Just to show you a small example of how much power and how much mighty we have, while we were negotiating this for almost two years now, we decided that we weren't going to wait until we got the SMID to actually start doing something in the South Side. And evidence of that is this past summer with the diversity market that we launched. Amongst Angie, myself, and Tasha Lard, who is not here today, but was one of the main people to work alongside with us with Nancy, we decided to bring together small entrepreneurs, whether it was food trucks, whether you were selling stuff from your house, whether you were a part of markets, to come out and show the city that there is energy here, that people want to find a more sustainable way to make income. You want to be able to pride yourself in saying that you are a business owner, and that you have value, and that you want to show your skill, your trade, whatever it is. And it was a very successful diversity market that we launched, really with the support of the city and other organizations. And it was a very beautiful thing to see just how much momentum we had with very little to none. So take that and extrapolate it to when we could have an executive board for the SMID, when we actually have money and resources, to take those diversity market entrepreneurs and say, hey, you have a front store window. We can help you with signage. Come here, check out the Pepperwood Plaza. Many of you know, if you drive by, you can easily miss the place. If there's no signage, if there's nothing that says, hey, stop by here, check out this location. So I'm very hopeful for the future. This is the right synergy, this is the right moment when everyone needs this. And it's beautiful to see that even when things are very low, when people might not have hope, you have this. In the midst of a pandemic, in the midst of everything that we're going through, people are coming together and saying, we're going to come out of here stronger. So I hope you all have the support that we need. Thank you.
Thank you, Marlen.
My name is V. Fixmer Orais, and that's F-I-X-M-E-R hyphen O-R-A-I-Z. And I'm the business, I'm CEO and founder of Astig Planning. We have office, an office in this area. And after going after all of these strong, powerful women, I really don't have much left to say, except as somebody that has an office in this area, it is, there's a lot of opportunity that you can see walking through the neighborhood, walking through the Pepperwood Plaza. It's great to have, you know, these anchors, the banks, we have a lot of, we have very strong nonprofits that are also in Pepperwood Plaza. But it's also an opportunity, much like it's already been said, you know, there's a lot of diversity in the area, there's a lot of energy and excitement, and really what we're talking about in general is social and racial equity. When we look at the hubs that are in this town, there doesn't just have to be one, right? We can create an economic hub, an opportunity, in an area that has a lot going for it already. I mean, you have so much support and energy. To be quite honest, when I heard that there was a SMID that was being put forth by a Neighborhood Association, it took me back. That's very rare. I've never heard, I've been through a master's program in urban and regional planning, and I've never heard of a SMID being put forth by a Neighborhood Association. It's usually a business district, it's usually an arts council, and quite frankly, it's usually white. I mean, it's usually white-led, and here you have an opportunity to support something that is truly unique, I would say in the state of Iowa and probably in the Midwest. So I'm very excited. I know that a lot has already been said, so I won't restate it, but as a business with an office in this area, I'm excited about the economic opportunity, and as a business owner that focuses on planning and social and racial equity, I hope that you see the worth and the merit for this gift, actually, that I think that the Neighborhood Association and all of its partners have provided you. So I just urge you strongly to vote in favor of the SMID petition.
V, I have a question.
Yes.
As a professional planner, if the SMID is approved by council, what do you see as their, like, their first or next steps?
In the SMID?
In the SMID? Like, what, the board, like, what do you, what do you just foretell that some of the first things they should do?
Well, I imagine that they're going to self-organize, you know? I mean, I think some of the, any of the first things is getting that internal process, those internal processes figured out and gelling those before you start working on projects. But I have no doubt that they probably already have 12 projects ready to go, maybe 20. So I think it's probably just going to be a matter of them having a couple of meetings and organizing themselves from within.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm Kate Moreland with Iowa City Area Development Group, and I'm here also just in support of the SMID. So much has been said, but this is really a critical economic development tool for this area, and as Wendy stated, it is used throughout the state and different communities. And I think in the time we're living in, it's really important to consider this a tool that can really help with inclusive economic recovery. It's really important that we help build wealth in our minority communities, and I just want to commend the leadership that really has been using their own time, volunteering, pounding the pavement for two years, working with business owners that I've spoken with personally that are very supportive of this effort over there, and I think it's going to be transformational. So I look forward to looking back and knowing this was a really critical time when we made an important decision. So I urge you and hope you'll support this effort. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Kate.
Good evening. My name is Eleanor Levin. I wear a lot of hats around Iowa City, but currently I'm here as a resident of the South District. The five-year time horizon is actually kind of personally meaningful to me because I became a resident of the South District four and a half years ago, just over. And in that time, I've seen more businesses close than open. I've seen three liquor stores but no place to buy socks. I've seen very few walkable opportunities for retail in my neighborhood. That being said, there are some people, commercial interests, property owners who run businesses, and property owners who lease to business holders, who really see the value in this I relish the sights around the residential streets of my neighborhood, parks, people on bikes, gardeners, basketball games. The businesses, on the other hand, the outward-facing piece of the neighborhood are unremarkable, underutilized, and disconnected. The South District Iowa City SMID proposal will bring the commercial properties to life. Every property owner who signs on is looking forward to improved signage and lighting, coordinated marketing, walkable events, and improved utilization of the neglected properties with a powerful potential clientele living all around them. At present, I have nowhere in walking distance to pick up craft supplies for a project, or grab a tool or piece of hardware to make an essential home repair. The businesses currently in the area work incredibly hard, and I see the SMID supporting them and helping the area to thrive long into the future. Please put your support behind the South District's self-supported municipal improvement district. Let's see what happens when a small portion of the property owner's resources are pooled and put into use by folks who love this place and who want to see it bloom. Thank you.
Thank you, Eleanor.
Yeah, really hard to follow all these wonderful comments here, it just makes me so much more excited about the prospect, you know, of having a SMID in the South District. I'm Kim Casco, President and CEO of the Iowa City Area Business Partnership, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Business Partnership to voice our support for the creation of a SMID in the South District of Iowa City. Like Kate said, SMIDs are just a fantastic economic development tool and really a great model for providing localized business support. As a countywide chamber, we often struggle with providing that super tailored business support services, and that's where a SMID is really that great tool for doing that. And we have a great partnership with the Iowa City Downtown District in doing exactly that. They provide really uber-tailored support to the businesses within that district, and then we connect, we, you know, play the role of connecting those businesses with, you know, across the county into the whole, and with the work we do at the state level and federal level around advocacy. And it's a really great relationship and a great partnership, and we look forward to building that same partnership with the SMID in the South District. All I would say is just that having, having that SMID in the South District will be beneficial not only to the businesses in that district, but the residents in that neighborhood, as you've heard, as well as to all of the Iowa City area and surrounding communities. And so I encourage you to support this project, and thank you for your time, and thank you to these wonderful ladies back here who have just been working so hard at this.
All right. Thank you, Kim. Any other persons who'd like to address the commission on this issue? Second call. Seeing no one, we'll close the public comment period. Could I have a motion to recommend to the city council that the proposed district petition be approved and sent to them for their consideration?
So moved.
So we got a motion by nullity. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by signs, discussion. I'll start off. As a resident of the South District since 1993, I think everything that was said tonight was true. I mean, there's certainly enough density of population that retail should be much more successful than it is. It's always very concerning when the liquor stores and tobacco outlets seem to proliferate and thrive, and regular old retail seems not. And so clearly something is out of kilter, and maybe this may be an opportunity to try to get the scales rebalanced for retail and just businesses in general in the South District. I really think the district is positioned in exactly the right place to be wildly successful in the future, but it's going to take some, a few key moves right now and the right moves for that to happen. So I will enthusiastically support this. Any other comments?
Just echo that, I'm so excited. The leadership of Angie and Marlen and the support of all the other organizations, and I know the downtown district will help them all along with all the SMID technicality stuff, so I can't wait.
All right. Thank you, Mark.
I think it's great, the amount of energy that is coming out of this area of our community and what you've all put into it to get to where you are today in five years, it's going to be great. My only concern is, it's not a very big budget. I mean, to go from nothing to $100,000 seems like, you know, it's way better than nothing, but I'm concerned about how far you can make that money stretch, but you'll do great things.
To that point, I mean, I wanted to make a comment about the executive director piece because I know a lot of times when you have organizations and nonprofits form and you look at their budgets and there's always, you know, there's always this questioning of the value and the need for an executive director. Having been involved in many, many, many nonprofit organizations and groups, the, I truly think the key, one of the key determiners of whether the project is going to succeed or not is whether they have a strong leader at the helm. You can have, you can have all the volunteers in the world that are supportive, but there's only so much, you know, so much they can do, it's not their full-time job. You know, I am a South District resident, I have been very involved off and on with the Neighborhood Association. I've been woefully uninvolved in this project, and I, I forgot to say that, but I know it's in good hands because I know the people who are, who worked together to put, to put this together. And some of the things that the Neighborhood Association has already done with no budget, with no, you know, with no executive director are pretty amazing. And so when you have the support of businesses, I want to thank the downtown district specifically for your support. As a South District resident, you know, a lot of times we question, we feel like a lot of resources are going to the downtown district and not other parts of the community. And so it's really wonderful to see the amount of support and guidance that the downtown district has provided. And I definitely want to call out Angie Jordan. She wears me out. She, she wears me out, and, you know, and she has, she has worked tirelessly in our neighborhood to promote the neighborhood, to better the neighborhood, and to come up, you know, to work with a group of people and business owners, business owners, that's the key, that synergy between the residents and the business owners and the community, you know, economic development groups and things like that, that's what's going to make this succeed. And I'm just all, I'm pumped up, the energy, just these presentations are amazing tonight, so I'm wholeheartedly in support of passing this forward to the council for their approval.
All right. Any further discussion on this issue?
I also would like to say that I support the project. I was like, he'd be very surprised by a low percentage in the support numbers, but I think it's because it takes a long time to contact people and get responses. I was very excited to see so many different groups that support this, like nonprofits and private sector and just residents, so that's the most exciting part. And I understand that the budget is low, it can be, you know, it's basically one executive director, and if you hire like a part-time person, it would be gone. But you have to think that sometimes these organizations find ways to get, you know, grants and funding from other places, so I think the budget could potentially be much more than that, so that's exciting.
All right. Thank you.
And I think that's one of the key pieces of having that executive director piece, is they're able to, they have the time and the ability and the resources and the connections to make, to grow that budget. I truly believe it will grow.
Any further discussion?
One of the things I would like to have heard is why businesses left that community. Is there going to be any research on why they left, and can it be fixed for those new ones coming in? It just seems that that's, that should be a concern.
And I just have to add that you can buy your craft supplies at Joann's, which I spend a lot of money. There is, there is a hardware store nearby, which I appreciate both of those businesses for being in that area, so.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the motion passes unanimously. Next item up is on the agenda, item number five, case number REZ21-0009. Location, east of South Riverside Drive and north of McAllister Boulevard. This is an application for rezoning of approximately 5.81 acres of land from a high-density single-family residential with a planned development overlay. And the note here is the rezoning is necessary to expand the existing manufacturing housing park due to the expiration of the previously approved OPD plan. And Ray?
Thank you, Chair. Ray Hydner, Neighborhood and Development Services, and I will get the presentation There it is. Okay, we'll jump right in here. So this is an aerial view of the subject property, about 5.81 acres. Here's a view of the zoning designation applied to that previous map. You can see the entirety of the subject property is shaded in yellow. That's for the base zone of RS12, and then there's that kind of diagonal hatching going across it that signifies that there's a planned development overlay. So some background on this application, this property was rezoned to OPD RS12 for zoning that came before the city in 2015. As was stated by the Chair, the subject rezoning is necessary to expand the existing manufactured housing park that's due west due to expiration of previously approved OPD plan from 2015. 2015. And the OPD rezoning is required for development of a manufactured housing park. So that's the rationale for the planned development overlay. The manufactured home park, housing park situated to the west was developed in 1974 with a build-out of 55 units. The subject application wishes to add on an additional 35 manufactured homes in the undeveloped parcel, undeveloped area of the parcel to the east. It's our understanding that the applicant intends to combine the existing manufactured housing park to the north and west along with the subject property. Some amenities that would be shared by the community include a storm shelter and future playground and recreational areas. Staff is proposing a condition that the applicant construct the storm shelter as well as the adjacent sidewalk along the south side of the entrance street prior to issuance of building permits. And one last background note, the applicant did hold a virtual Good Neighbor meeting on October 11th. There were no members of the public in attendance at that meeting. So as most of you are familiar with, when you have planned development rezonings, there's a little bit more criteria for those rezonings to be reviewed against in addition to kind of the standard rezoning review criteria that's shown at the bottom of this slide, denoting consistency with comprehensive plan and compatibility with the existing neighborhood. In addition, for OPDs, there's criteria related to density and design being compatible with the adjacent development, assurance that development will not overburden existing streets and utilities, assurance that development will not adversely affect views, property values of privacy, and the interaction of land use and building types will be in the public interest. I'll go over each of those in a little bit more detail here. So with respect to density and design being compatible to adjacent development, the proposed density with the 35 units would come out to about six dwelling units per acre, which is allowed within the RS12 base zone, which allows up to 13 dwelling units per acre. Proposed homes would be about 14 feet by 70 feet, which is a fairly standard size for a manufactured home of this type. There does appear to be adequate open space within each leased lot. And then within the context of the greater community, there is vacant land in the northwest area of the park, which I'll show in a bit. Staff is proposing a condition that the applicant submit an open space plan for that open land, particularly for the area south of the entrance road. And that open space plan should show any future recreational amenities. And lastly, transportation planning staff did review the impact to the local transportation network, road network, and did not express any concerns with the build-out of this development to that network. So I mentioned the building width at 14 feet. There's a requirement within the RS12 base zone that the minimum building width is 20 feet. So through the planned development process, there's a mechanism to request a waiver from that standard or modification to that standard. In judging that waiver request, there's criteria from Section 14387 of the City Code that allows for exceptions to the OPD approval criteria. I'll try to summarize those really quickly here. One, that the modification will be in harmony with the purpose and intent of the City Code and comprehensive plan. Two, that the modification will generally enhance the proposed planned development and will not have an adverse impact on physical, visual, or spatial characteristics. Three, that the modification will not result in configuration of lots or street system that is impractical or detracts from the appearance of the proposed development. And lastly, that the modification will not result in danger to public health, safety, or welfare by preventing access to emergency vehicles, inhibiting the provision of public services, depriving adjoining properties of adequate light and air, or violating the purposes and intent of the City Code and comprehensive plan. So as I mentioned before, the requested building width of 14 feet is in line with the existing manufactured housing stock that you see in the neighborhoods to the west and north. Development of this vacant portion of the parcel would allow for development of underutilized land within the subject parcel. And the configuration of lots and the layout of the internal street network will be similar to the neighborhood to the west. And I'll also touch on just kind of the configuration of the buildings and how they'll be laid out in a couple slides here, too. So here's that space I was speaking about a couple slides ago that staff is recommending a condition for an open space plan highlighted in orange there, just south of the entrance road.
Ray, can you use your cursor? I cannot see orange.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, orange might have been a bad color.
And maybe I can't see your cursor either.
Yeah. Anne, do you want to point it out?
Thank you. Okay. I figured, but I just wasn't sure.
The second criteria point, that development will not over, will not overburden existing streets and utilities. I already mentioned transportation planning staff commenting that estimated 250 vehicle trips per day generated from the development. The surrounding road network has sufficient capacity to absorb that estimated trip amount. Staff is recommending a condition that the applicant final plat the subject property and with that final plat, that the applicant submit a site and grading plan for the city engineer to review. It's with that review that city staff will finalize its review of stormwater plans. Point three, that development will not adversely affect views, property values, or privacy. This is mostly with respect to making sure that any structures are within the confines of what's allowed within the base zone. These homes will be well allowed with, well within the allowable bulk dimensions for RS12 structures, particularly height. There's an allowable height of 35 feet within that base zone. These will be well below that. And that land use and building types will be in the public interest. There are several setback reductions that the applicant is requesting. This is something that we would probably see in just about any manufactured housing park application due to the nature of, you know, the leased lots typically not aligning with the lot size requirements that you have in a base zone in this case, in RS12. So I'll go over these setback reductions in, in more detail here. First is that there's a requirement for a 30-foot setback from the edge of the property. Lots one through three and four through 13 are requesting this reduction, one through three down to zero feet, four through 13 to 10 feet. Second, the reduction of the rear yard setback for all leased lots except one through three from 20 feet to 10 feet. And third, reduction of the side yard setback from five feet to zero feet, again, for lots, leased lots one through three. And there is some criteria that we do need to evaluate for those setback reduction requests. Again, I'll try to kind of explain these fairly quickly, but one, that the setbacks proposed will provide adequate light, air, and privacy between dwellings and between dwellings and the public right-of-way. Two, sufficient setbacks are incorporated to provide the opportunity for adequate private open space for each dwelling unit. Three, setbacks proposed will provide sufficient area for utilities and street trees. Four, if front setbacks are reduced, measures should be taken to preserve privacy within residential dwellings and to provide a transition between the public right-of-way and private property. And five, residential buildings that are located in close proximity to each other must be designed to preserve privacy. So the first of those requests, again, is a 30-foot setback from the edge of the property. This would be applicable to kind of the, the north side of the subject property for lots one through three and the east side of the property for lots four through 13. For lots four through 13, the property to the immediate east is a city-owned park. That will remain as open space due to its location within the floodplain. Lots one through three will still maintain a 15-foot separation distance as also required by code to the structures to the north. Staff is recommending a condition to combine the existing neighborhood to the north with the subject property at final plating. This would effectively remove this, this requirement for a 30-foot setback from the edge of the property. Second reduction request, rear yard setback from 20 feet to 10 feet. This applies to every property except for lots one through three. They will all have 10-foot setback, which generally matches what you see in the existing neighborhoods to the west and north. I don't know if you can really tell it by, by looking at this image, but the homes are offset across the street, meaning that they don't perfectly align with one another. And the homes within or on each side of the street will maintain that required minimum separation distance of 20 feet. The resulting building coverage will only be between 18 and 22% for each of these leased lots, and that, that can go up to 50% in the base zone. So that should provide adequate open space within each leased lot. And then the side yard reduction request from five feet to zero feet. So for leased lots one through three, you might be able to see that the kind of southeast corner of each of the proposed buildings there in gray does touch the side yard lot line. That's why that request would be down to zero feet. But again, kind of the positioning here helps to offset views into each home where they're sort of diagonally arranged. You won't be necessarily looking into your neighbor's home. There is a good amount of open space, both north and south of these structures. Approximately 21% of each leased lot will be covered by the proposed homes. So in addition to the setback reduction request, there's also a waiver reduction request for minimum lot size for a few of these lots. The base zone requires a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet. The lots outlined in purple there, one and two and 32 through 36 are requesting that that gets reduced down to 4,500 square feet. As I mentioned before, the smaller lots won't result in any increased density at six dwelling units per acre. The existing neighborhood to the west is at about six and a half dwelling units per acre. To the north, it's at seven and a half dwelling units per acre. So just because you're getting a few smaller lots doesn't mean you're kind of pumping up the density, so to speak. The driveways within each of these lots will be offset from the lots across the street. There will also be recessed parking pads behind each front facade as well. So kind of proceeding into the more standard rezoning review criteria with respect to consistency with the comprehensive plan. The South Central District Plan does note that residential usage should be phased out of this area. However, that plan was written close to 20 years ago. There have been some changes in the surrounding area since that plan, mostly the improvement of McCallister Boulevard with access eastward to Sickmore Street, as well as construction of a levy to the east, which I'll get into more in a little bit. The Iowa City Comprehensive Plan also indicates a need for affordable housing, especially in areas with good access to parks and other amenities, which we think this application And because the property is expanding on an existing use to the west, from the west, provides relatively affordable housing alternative and has good access to the street network, trails, and open space, it's staff's opinion that a comprehensive plan amendment is not necessary to approve this OPD plan. And with respect to compatibility with the existing neighborhood character, as I've mentioned a few times already, there is already a manufactured housing park to the north and west. The proposed development will be built within a similar style and layout. Here's just a couple images of the existing park to the west. This is looking north from the south side of the park, just to give you a little bit of a visual for the existing conditions to the west. Here's a look at kind of that unit end-to-end separation between one of the blocks coming out. I didn't measure it, but probably about 15 feet, I would guess. So the entirety of the subject property is located within the 100 and 500-year floodplains, as you can probably see on this map. There was a levy constructed along the Iowa River in 2008 and to meet U.S. Army Corps of Engineer and FEMA design standards. This levy has not been certified or accredited, however. FEMA accreditation would change the flood zone designation from A to X, which means the area is still technically within the 100-year floodplain, but mandatory flood insurance would be lifted at that stage. The Army Corps certification would make the levy eligible for federal funding if the levy system was damaged by a flood event. And then just kind of some background on the city's floodplain, floodplain management standards. The project, the subject property would be required to conform to those standards. The city engineer and building inspection staff would require a review of that site grading plan that I mentioned before to show that the proposed ground elevations are acceptable in relation to that floodplain. And here's just a couple pictures of, oops, of the levy about as close as I could get here. This is a view kind of to the east. You can maybe see the river in the, in the background there. And then this is kind of a view, not so much related to the levy, but just from that general area, kind of looking to the northwest, roughly where the proposed development would fill We have not received any public comments on this rezoning, and as I mentioned before, there was a Good Neighbor meeting on October 11th. There were no neighbors in attendance at that meeting. So the role of the commission tonight is to see if the proposed rezoning meets the aforementioned planned development approval criteria, as long as, along with the rezoning review criteria. With respect to next steps, upon recommendation from this commission, a public hearing would be scheduled for city council consideration. We would anticipate timeline of council setting that public hearing at its November 16th meeting for a public hearing on November 30th. Staff is recommending approval of REZ21-0009, an application for rezoning of approximately 5.1 acres of land located east of South Riverside Drive and north of McCallister. 5.1 acres of land located east of South Riverside Drive and north of Macaulster Boulevard from high-density single-family residential with plan development overlay, OPD RS 12 to OPD RS 12, subject to the following conditions. One, that prior to issuance of any building permit for the property described herein, compliance with the plan development overlay plan, which will be attached to future conditional zoning agreement, which shall include construction of a storm shelter and sidewalk along the existing east-west private street to Riverside Drive. Also, private, prior to issuance of a building permit, approval of a final plat of the subject property, at which time the applicant shall submit for review by the city engineer, construction drawings, and a site grading and drainage plan. Condition number three, as part of the final plating process, the lot line between the property described herein and the property to the north would be dissolved. This condition will ensure that the required 30-foot setback along the northern property boundary of the subject property is nullified when the properties are combined. The final plat will need to include the adjoining properties to the west and north, all of which are under the same ownership as the subject property. And lastly, condition number four, submission of an open space plan for the vacant area located south of the park entrance and west of lease lot two to be approved by the Director of Neighborhood and Development Services. The plan shall detail future amenities such as playground equipment and/or recreational fields. Prior to issuance of a building permit, compliance with the approved open space plan is required and should include construction of the approved open space improvements. And that concludes my presentation.
All right. Thank you, Ray. Now, it's opportunity for commission to ask staff any questions they have about this presentation. And I'll start off, I have three. They're all interconnected, so they might boil down just to one. I recall somewhat the discussions in 2015 when we resummed this the last time. I noted in this staff report, there's four specific conditions added to the recommendations to the rezoning. How does that vary from the conditions that were approved by PNZ in 2015? Because I couldn't find my notes from that meeting.
Yeah, sure. So, the condition related to dissolving the north property line for the 30-foot setback was in that 2015 OPD. And there was also a condition related to construction of the storm shelter, as well as that sidewalk on the east-west private street, that those are also carryovers. New for this application would be requiring a final plat. We saw that as necessary for getting a more formal opportunity for reviewing these construction drawings and the site grading and drainage plan, as well as submission of that open space plan for the vacant area. That's a condition that we've added for this subject rezoning.
My other question is about the floodplain. I've noticed Ed through the years has been filling in, or at least raising the elevation of that subject parcel. Is the intention with the grading plan to raise it above the 100-year floodplain and/or the 500 or both? Do you, and so, when it's raised up, is it technically out of the floodplain then?
I don't know if it's out of the floodplain necessarily. My understanding is that, and the applicant can speak to this if this is incorrect, but my understanding is that the applicant intends to incorporate fill to raise above the flood hazard elevation level, which would be required by our flood management standards. I don't know if that necessarily removes it from the floodplain. I'm not sure. But, that's my understanding of the applicant's plan to deal with the requirements of the floodplain management standards by incorporating that fill above that denoted base level.
And is that standard, does that require the raising out of the 100 or the 500?
It's the 500.
500, okay, very good, thank you.
It needs to be one foot above the 500-year floodplain.
Okay, thank you. Other questions for staff in this application?
Yes. So, Ray, do we, does the city put out the Good Neighbor Meeting letter? Is that correct?
Typically, that's, the applicant will reach out to the community with that Good Neighbor letter.
And it's 300 feet?
Right now, the notification buffer is 300 feet, yes.
So, I pulled this up on the assessor site, so the city of Iowa City seems to own the land that would do that. So, the city of Iowa City, do you have someone that goes to those meetings if you're the
I wouldn't say we have anyone that goes representing a neighbor hat, so to speak. I mean, we have staff at all of those Good Neighbor meetings, just to see how those meetings are conducted. But, you know, I will say there was representation from the manufactured housing park community in attendance at that meeting, just no members of the general public.
Ah, thank you. That's my misunderstanding.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions. That's being built in the flood zone, but the flood insurance, mandatory flood insurance would be, requirement would be lifted. What happens if there is a flood? Would their regular insurance cover that, or would they just be out of luck?
Maybe I can answer that. This is Anne Russett. Since the levy has not been certified or accredited, the mandate, that area is still required to have flood insurance. So, until it's certified by FEMA, that the mandatory flood insurance requirement is still in existence, and that wouldn't be lifted unless it was, unless the levy was certified.
I have a question that is just very similar to that and what you're saying. Why isn't it certified? And what does it take to get it certified? And why isn't that one of the requirements of the application? I mean, I assume this levy was not built by the city.
Oh, yeah.
It was, it was. We paid for it.
And so, why?
Yeah. And it was, it was built to FEMA and Army Corps of Engineers standards, but it was never certified or accredited.
I mean, what does it take to get it?
It takes money. It takes money to go through that process.
Like, how much money?
I couldn't tell you. That's something that we'd have to talk to Public Works about and get back to you.
My other question is on the difference between the square footage of a 14-by-70 unit as opposed to a 20-by-70 unit. Do you have any idea how much space there, the difference?
I can do a quick calculation here.
And what there should be and what we want to waive it to.
430 square feet, is that right? 430 square feet.
980, 980 to 1,400.
All these minds are working.
Yeah, 420 square feet difference.
And we're okay with that, huh? They're tiny units anyway.
Yeah.
Any further questions?
Yeah, yeah. I still, I'm going to belabor this levy thing. Am I, am I correct in saying because the levy is not certified, the people have to have flood insurance?
I think it's required of the property owner.
The property owner has to have flood insurance? And it's covering the mobile home units, which are privately owned?
I think that probably, Ed would probably be able to answer questions about the insurance that he has.
Okay. But if the levy were certified, that requirement would not be there?
That's correct. The area would still be in the floodplain, but flood insurance would not be required.
Okay. The general concern I have is meeting the criteria of adequate private open space. When I look at the map, it seems like things are really crammed in here. And when you're asking for exceptions, I totally get the type of housing and neighborhood that it is, you're not going to have the standard kinds of setbacks. But, to go down to zero seems just, I'm not, I'm not sure that we're meeting, in my mind, that adequate private open space, particularly along the border with the city property. I mean, you know, if a housing development came in here and wanted to, you know, even change the back setback from 20 feet to 10 feet along a city park, we would be up in arms over that. And just because the city owns it, you can go to zero? It doesn't seem right to me. You'll get your chance. So, is there a definition of adequate private open space, or is that just our judgment?
I think that's part of what you're being asked tonight.
What we're trying to determine, okay.
But I do want to clarify that when the city acquired that land back in, what is it, 1998?
The land along the river.
Along the river.
Right.
There's kind of a bigger.
Yeah, that land on our right there.
Yes. They retained an easement over that area to satisfy any future open space requirement through that land. I mean, they.
Who's they?
The, well, now, Mr. Cole is the easement holder. So, it was the people that conveyed it to the city.
The city.
Said, "In the event that the mobile home expands and we have an open space requirement, we get to use this land in our calculation for that open space requirement."
And if I could just further clarify, that's for the public open space, the neighborhood open space requirement, not the private onsite open space requirement that we typically require.
Yeah.
That is for a development in an RS 12 zone that's considered single-family. It would be 500 square feet onsite. Because these lease lots don't meet that standard, staff has proposed that condition for the, the community, I guess, the community open space area.
I want to ask, I think, it's my understanding that the places where the setback is going to zero is on lots one, two, and three, and where the homes are built at an angle from corner to corner of those lots. But it still seems, quite frankly, it seems to me there's more open space on those three lots than there is on any of the rest of them.
It was zero on the back, on everything that backed up to the city property.
It's zero on lots one through three, on the north side and on the east side of each of those lots. On the lots four through 13, the rear yard setback would be 10 feet from the rear property line.
The other question I have is, and this is my last question. It feels to me in a neighborhood, and with all of our conversations about walking and biking and things, that I understand you don't want a vehicle access onto Macaulster, but to have a pedestrian bicycle access onto Macaulster feels like something that that whole little neighborhood would benefit from. And was that ever brought up or talked about?
The OPD plan here does show a connection, and I apologize if, I don't think I mentioned this, but there is a connection shown in the southwest corner. I don't know why my cursor's not showing here, but there is a connection between kind of the south end of the loop and Macaulster.
Okay, I'm seeing it now.
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't see that the first time. Thank you. I think that's.
It's coming off of Iowa, of Iowa City's property.
So, it's coming off of Iowa City's property?
No, it's coming off of Macaulster.
No, yeah, it's, it would be between Macaulster and the south end of this loop.
Is this what I'm looking, is this what we're looking at?
Is it what it says drainage?
Oh, there's one right there.
Sorry, it's hard to see on here.
It's right, it's right there.
Is it what it says drainage?
Yeah.
I wonder, I didn't see it. Like, I don't see it.
That little north and south line.
So, it's between two of those lots down on the bottom that are on Macaulster?
There aren't any lots on the bottom.
It's, the, yeah, those are not lots. I think those are trees.
Oh, yeah.
Do you want to go point it out?
Yeah, sure.
I can't see it either.
Thank you. I didn't see that. I think that's a good thing.
It's easy to miss.
Okay, that's my question.
Any further questions for staff? Hearing none. Before we open the public hearing, we'll take a five-minute bathroom break, so we'll reconvene from recess in exactly five minutes.
Recession.
Go to recess.
I will stand. Oh. I need a drink.
Change, I don't have to do the running.
Honestly, don't know. There has to be, but I can't tell you where it's at.
It's right, it's right by the elevator.
Okay.
Anyway, I got the text.
What?
It's a little.
The men's room? Yeah, it's right.
What we're talking about here?
It's close. It's closer than the women's. You have to go all the way down the hall.
Or is there a swill there, too?
There's like a crosswalk. I can see that.
Yeah. I think it's both, actually, because there's that crosswalk located there.
Yeah, there's one here, too.
These chairs are not sitting friendly.
No, they're not.
Hey, I'm not ready for this cold weather.
Oh, no kidding.
So, it's reading the deed.
But I'm not ready for the coat yet either, so.
Because.
I grabbed the big sweaters and hopeful.
Additional open space required.
Hopefully, they'll keep me warm enough.
Code. But it's satisfied thereon.
In the 2015 report.
So, what you been up to, Mike?
You know, it's the stuff, just working.
Just working.
Like, it's very.
They are. Not only warm, they're comfortable.
Looks like you've got some major grips on that, so you won't go flying.
And you, you might have to worry about the strings, just unzip them.
Hi, Mark. How are you?
I'm good.
Great. How's Green State?
It's good. I like it.
Is your spider still there?
Oh. No, he's gone. I don't know what they'll do for Thanksgiving. Those two women that work with Pete are crazy.
Yeah.
Every day, there's something.
Yeah.
They're always bringing snacks in. They're always bringing.
Oh, that's awesome.
Yeah.
I have three closings with Pete on the 12th.
Okay.
Two of which are at the same time. I'm like.
Figure it out.
What about you? What about me?
Yeah, how did they do that? Can't get one month.
Whatever.
Yeah, how's he supposed to do that?
Probably do one, and he'll do one, and I'll, I have the seller one and the buyer have a different one, so I'll take my seller docs early, go to my buyer one, go back and get my checks for the other one.
I want to get one of these new-fangled computer devices, so I can look at things.
Well, then, they're computers.
That's right.
Only problem with those computers is I like the scribbled notes. A lot of underlining and circling and.
Yeah.
Then you get, then you get one that you can do that.
Yes, I get one of those.
Those cost more.
Mac Pros, I think, you can write.
Market?
In this one, you can write, in this one. You can open the PDF and then write notes on top of it.
Yeah.
That's what we always used to say.
Which one is it? That's a chrome?
The little does this.
Oh, okay.
You just do this, yeah.
Our overall, even including right now, our, our average annual.
All righty, let's come out of recess, so we'll reconvene this meeting. And now, we're at the public. And now, we're at the public inputs, public comment section, so we'll open the public hearing. Now's the opportunity for the public to comment on this application. We'll start with the applicant or the applicant's representative.
Good evening. My name's Nick Bettis with Acxiom Consultants, B as in Boy, E-T-T-I-S, 60 East Court Street, Unit 3. I'm here on behalf of the applicant to be able to answer any questions that you might have with the drawings and stuff. But we feel that it's going to be a good addition and a good continuation of the park in this part of town. So, any questions? I'd be happy to answer them.
Well, the, it looks like it's been elevated a lot of grading and a lot of fillback there. Is there still more work to do to bring that up elevation out of the floodplain?
Yeah, there, as you've noticed, there has been fill dirt been added to the site over the years. There is, I don't know exactly where the dirt is right now. It's continuing to be brought in as it's become available, but it is planned to be elevated to that 500-year plus-one elevation for the openings as required.
And then the, is that for the entire parcel, including the roadways?
It will be. Obviously, we're connecting in on that northwest corner, and the existing part of the park does not meet those requirements. So we will be connecting onto the existing street at the northwest corner and then coming up from that up to the elevations.
But then the entire subject parcel will be out of the five-year, 500-year, it'd be elevated above the 500-year floodplain?
Yeah, the little openings on the units will be. The, as was stated, the levee to the east provides some context as far as the elevation of that, so it'll be kind of in a similar height fashion is what the levee is.
Okay.
So I guess my question is in regard to the flood insurance, too. Even when that time comes, that the, you're not mandated by FEMA to carry that level of coverage, does the owner generally still provide some level of security on that, or...
I'm not able to speak to that, or no? Eddie will be able to.
Okay.
Any other questions for Nick? Seeing none, thanks, Nick.
Thank you.
Ed, are you coming forward?
Ed Cole, 620 Foster Road. As far as the dirt goes, I've had MMS set me a stake over on a utility pole. And we're, on one end, we're out of the 500-year, but on this end, we're not. So by the time we level it out and cut our streets in, all the mobile home lots will be out. The yards might have a waterway through it, but...
Sure.
Yeah, we're going to make sure they're taken care of. And as far as the insurance, each homeowner has their own insurance, and if they have financing against it, they're required to have flood insurance on their homes.
Even when it's out of the X?
No, not when...
Okay.
Because that gets certified, which I'm not sure of that process. We were supposed to get a loan. When I bought the park from a guy, he said, "Oh, you're going to get a loan certificate for it," which meant we were in the clear. And when I checked into it with the engineer, there might be, there might not be, but there was never no definite, "Yes, we're going to get you a loan." That's part of his selling tactic. Shame on him.
I've been there. Don't worry.
No, we have a great community down there. I grew up in that park that we're talking about as a kid, and there used to be woods in there, and we used to ride in motorcycles through there. But no, it's a close-knit community of a mobile home park. It really doesn't get any better as far as security. And I was reluctant to put the sidewalk in off Macaulister, because we have one way in and one way out of both our parks. So we know who's coming, who's going, and it's kind of like a crime watch, and it's, that'll deteriorate a little bit, but, you know, hopefully our neighbors stick together and we just keep doing what we've been doing.
Great.
We have Hilltop on the south side, and that's a great community as well, and it'll hit that, it'll help with that. Pepperwood, just a lot of talent over there, so. Is there any questions?
Yes. Ed, can you walk me through what 2008 looked like over there for you?
In 2008, I didn't have that park.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I bought it in 2000...
2013.
2013.
Got it.
Yeah, my daughters don't let me in the office anymore.
So can you walk me through this insurance question that keeps coming up? And, you know, I admit, I don't know much about flood insurance, so you got to baby steps here. So do you carry the flood insurance? But then I would assume that the individual unit people on their units would have to carry flood insurance. Is that true?
Yeah, that's true. Both floods we had had were, I mean, basically they were man-made because of lack of using the reservoir for what it was for. But we've not even been close since 2008 as far as water coming up. We haven't really tracked it since we've had it. 2011, we had quite a bit of rain as well, but it just, we, being in the excavating business my whole life, we went out and we did the proper thing to make sure you weren't going to get hit with anything.
Ed, that levee, how far north does that go? I've never walked back there. I just see it from Macaulister.
It goes all the way over to that train bridge.
Oh, okay.
And kids use it to walk on. It's pretty cool.
And Ed, these, these units will likely be sited on pillars, on blocks, so the actual, the actual floor and entry to the unit itself is going to be a couple feet above grade anyway.
Yes, yep. Yeah, all brand-new units brought in, and we're certified to move in now. Took quite a while to get that, but you have the four pillars, and it's a really neat setup the way they do it now.
Any commission for the questions for Ed? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The other member of the public who'd like to address the commission?
Hi, I'm Larissa Rosenquist. I'm with Cole's Community. I just, I'm here to express the interest from all of our tenants. Everybody that I've talked to wants a spot in the new section, so regardless of the floodplain status, they're very excited. So I'm really hoping that this gets passed through and everybody can be happy.
Can I ask you a question?
Of course.
So if you have current residents that are interested in the newer homes...
Many, yep. I started a waiting list, sorry to interrupt you.
No, you're good. Then, do you also have people ready for those older units, or do you...
I do.
...have kids to do rehab, or what?
Yeah, so we're really lucky. Like my daughter was saying, we have a really tight-knit community. A lot of times what happens is when something comes up for sale, it'll get sold like within the same day, and it's usually to a family member of our current tenant.
Interesting. Cool.
Yeah, like I was saying, our waiting list is already halfway full, so hopefully I'm not just making empty promises and I can get these people homes. And, yeah, it's exciting for these guys, so. Does anybody else have any questions?
Any further questions from Marissa?
Just to curate, what's, like, what's the supply chain for getting homes right now? Is that backed up?
Sure, so, yep. No, well, right now, yeah, it's a little bit backed up, and we're still really in the very beginning phases, working on the right financing and that kind of stuff to even start. But probably what we'll have to end up doing is bring in 10 at a time, do it in phases, and that'll probably be the most efficient way to do it. I mean, there's a lot of permits to pull and stuff, too, so like my husband and my dad will have to be pretty active in that stuff. Doesn't always go very quickly, so hopefully we have your support for the future project here.
Any other questions?
I have a question. What are the price ranges for these units, and also, when would they be ready?
Oh, gosh, I hope they're ready. I would say estimated time of arrival for the first batch could be the spring if this goes through. But I would say realistically, a year and a half from now, it could be completed. We'd like to start the infrastructure as soon as possible and get people, get them their financing and stuff, try to help people with that. I have no problem helping people get set up with the banks and stuff. It's going to be part of the process, obviously, so. Currently, lot rents at 380. We raise rents on average about $10 a year. This year, we were hit with some pretty hard property taxes because of out-of-state buyers coming in and purchasing mobile home parks for well above asking, and you know the story. So we're just trying to stay local, and we're just trying to stay family-owned and operated, so we'd like to keep it that way.
What's the price? I'm sorry, I didn't...
Sorry, 380 a month right now for both parks.
Oh, okay.
Yep, is lot rent.
Or did you mean how much are each unit?
No, I thought they were, I thought they were for sale, not for rent.
Right. They're, so lot rent is 380. Sorry, I thought you were asking about lot rent. Per home, I don't know exactly what the price of the units will be, because we're still in the very early stages of working with companies who can even supply us, so.
Have a ballpark at all?
I would say probably an average would be about $50,000 for a good, for a good elite quality-built place.
Okay.
So you own the land that they rent?
Yes, ma'am.
And they buy the unit?
Yes, yep.
And when they get ready to sell the unit, they can sell it outright, or you...
They, yep, they can do that, yep.
Okay.
All right, further questions? Seeing none, thank you, Marissa.
Yeah, thanks.
Is there anybody else who'd like to address the commission on this application? Second call. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. I entertain a motion on this application.
So moved.
Motion by Nolte, is there a second?
Second. Townsend.
By Townsend. Discussion?
Well, my concern, I said it before, I mean, I feel like I had some of my questions answered, and I'm very appreciative of the sidewalk to Macaulister. I understand what you're saying, but I still think it's a good thing. Is this adequate private open space? And it just, the map makes it look like they're so jammed in there, particularly when you start with the ones, can you go back to the map? The ones along...
The west side?
The west side, those vertical ones. Then you move over to the horizontal ones. And so many, what I feel are extreme requests for accommodations, changes. I think it is a housing need, and it's a nice part of town, and, I mean, to, I don't know, I'm very torn.
Guess I look at it, I trust that the park owner knows what is attractive to their users, and if those, if the setbacks were too narrow, I think they'd, they'd know that, so I guess I kind of, I lean to trust their judgment of what'll work there.
I, I've been looking, there's a lot of lines on this drawing, and I've been looking, trying to decipher what exactly is the home, what exactly is the driveway, what exactly...
And then there's trees in there.
And then there's trees in there. It appears, I mean, it appears to me that, you know, if the home is 980 square feet and there's 500 square feet of open space minimum in those lots, it's pretty typical for a manufactured home community.
Okay.
And I think it, and honestly, it's part of the affordability factor. It's part of what makes it affordable.
Right. And that's why I'm torn.
Yeah.
I think that affordability brings up, going back to the floodplain, which I just think is, it's super real, we have to really think about it, because if, even if it's taken out of the flood zone and flood insurance isn't required, which flood insurance is expensive, even when it's inexpensive, it's expensive. But if there is no flood insurance and it floods, what happens to those people? And, you know, maybe the rules have changed, obviously, and I didn't ask this question of the staff, and perhaps I should have, but I thought that after '08, the city was not allowing homes to be built so close to the river, thus the stopping of the continuation of Idlewild and buying out Normandy. So, you know, that's, maybe I have PTSD over 2008, I don't know. But it really, this is what I think about. And if these get flooded, if people are then stranded, then what? So I guess I go back to this levee, and I feel like you're right on. As many levees as were built between now and 2008, how it wasn't an automatic, they have to get accredited, that's shocking to me. And I don't know if, do we put that on the city? I mean, is that, or do we not? Because then at least they have to have flood insurance and maybe have an inkling of coverage should it happen. So yes, I just chased my own tail, but...
For me, I voted for this in 2015, so I don't want to be contradictory and then vote against it now. With it being out of the 500-year floodplain, I think that mitigates all reasonable risk. I mean, yeah, can we get a flood above 500-year flood? Absolutely. And then a lot of people are going to be in a hurt locker. And not just, I mean, the people, if it's outside of a 500-year floodplain, there's going to be people throughout the entire community that are going to be affected, and none of those people will have flood insurance, because you simply don't buy it.
Right, but at the same, at the same time, it's out of the floodplain because of a levee which is made of dirt.
No, it's out of the floodplain because they're raising the elevation. That's why it's out of the floodplain.
Both, I mean...
And then, and then the levee actually goes the length of, from Macaulister all the way up to the railroad trestle, and I believe that most of that's on city property, so I don't think the applicant can do anything about that, anyway.
Right.
So, you know, this Iowa City flooding is a real issue, but I think reasonable steps have been taken, so I'm okay with it.
And I think if it, you know, if you get a flood of that caliber, you're going to have to have assistance for everybody.
Yeah.
You know, and it will be made available, you know, in most cases, when you have that level of disaster.
Yeah, but the point is, we're supposed to not, we're supposed to be mitigating that as a country and not allowing development in floodplain. I mean...
Not putting people in the situation...
Right, where that could happen. And so I just want some assurance that, yes, anything can happen, but it's very, very minimal that it will happen here.
This will have to comply with the city's flood mitigation ordinances, which is the elevation. Those were the code changes that were made after the '08 flood. So, you know, looking at the aerial from the '08 flood, this area was under some amount of water. There are dry spots, but the existing mobile or manufactured housing park was not. So with the additional elevations, I don't know this for sure, but I thought that was interesting to see.
But you have to think that also elevating the terrain has other consequences. You cannot just move land and expect, like, the water is going to go somewhere else. So maybe if you raise the land here, some other place is going to get flooded. So we also have to be careful about that. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Right. So then there is a requirement about, you know, projects not having significant, I don't know quite what the criteria is, but that is part of the analysis that is considered, is the impact on adjacent land.
You can't negatively impact adjacent land or something like that?
Right. Did you say, and I think Ed concurred, maybe he can nod his head, where did he go?
He's not.
That the units will be built on pillars?
Yeah. So you've got, you've got the...
When you enter, won't you go up steps?
You're going to go up steps.
There's minimal disruption in terra with concrete because you're above ground.
Minimal, minimal what?
Disruption to the terra, terra firma, to the earth.
Well, they're on a concrete pad.
The pillars are also on a concrete pad.
I believe so.
They're on a footing of some kind, yeah.
So they'll be several feet above even the 500-year floodplain.
Well, there's different ways, I mean, you can, there's different ways. You can do strips of concrete, you can do individual pylons, you can do a lot of different ways. But my point, my point was that if they bring, if they bring the grade up to flood level, you're still, the homes are still...
Elevated above that.
Two or three feet above that.
Yeah.
You know, so...
I'm thinking of what people have done on Normandy that did put their house on stilts.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I mean, it's, you know, yeah, there's going to be, you know, water damage to the skirting around the base of the house, but the house, I really think, because they put a lot of -- of concrete, you can do individual pylons, you can do a lot of different ways. But my point, my point was that if, if they bring, if they bring the grade up to flood level, you're still, the, the homes are still.
Elevated above that.
Two or three feet above that.
Yeah.
You know, so.
I'm thinking of what people have done on Normandy that did put their house on stilts.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I mean, it's, you know, yeah, there's gonna be, you know, water damage to the skirting around the base of the house, but the house, I really think, because they put a lot of dirt in there, I mean, I drive by this fairly frequently, and I really, if they're, if they're close to floodplain, you know, protection level, the houses two or three, the houses are two or three feet above that in addition, I, you know, I think that, I think the risk is probably pretty minimal, but it's, it's existent, you know, there's no.
But we have, we have 100% certainty that we need more affordable housing, so to me that.
True, that's true.
Yeah, but the other thing is that I was thinking, like, if you, if these houses have to have insurance, then how much is, is more the mortgage? How much is the impact? And then are they still gonna be affordable?
Flood insurance is not cheap.
Compared to any other, any other structure in Iowa City, they are gonna be affordable.
Yeah. And it's really important to remember, if you look at the floodplain maps for Iowa City, it's not just contained along the Iowa River.
No, no.
You look through all the river, all the creeks in this town, a substantial portion of this city is in a floodplain of some sort or the other, so I just don't want people to get an impression this is some localized thing.
Totally, right, absolutely not, yeah.
So any further discussion?
Yeah, I was wondering, like, and this is, I should have asked this before, but it's just a comment, the units one, two, and three, where there's no setback, maybe they could be smaller units and then we could have a setback?
Smaller?
Yeah. Yeah, I know.
They're already awful small.
Very small, yeah.
And just for edification for members of the commission, this application was essentially the same one, pretty much exactly the same one, wasn't it, from 2015?
It is.
Was approved by the commission.
I remember, I think we met in the library that time.
Yeah, I just, I remember Ed being there.
Been a long time.
Yeah.
All right, further discussion? All those in favor of approving this application signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, motion passes unanimously. And flooding in Iowa City is a tough issue, folks.
Yeah.
I understand everybody's consternation because there's not a good answer. All right. I have number six, case number REZ21-0008. Location, south of Scott Boulevard and west of First Avenue, adjacent to Hickory Hill Park. This is an application for rezoning of approximately 48.75 acres of land from interim development single-family to low-density single-family with a planned development overlay.
Okay. Sorry. I gotta go, okay.
I thought you were gonna do this for me.
Is this only the fourth time we've seen this? You can not have a poker face.
Kind of committed to memory all that.
I can't see my face.
Ray, is it yours?
Yes, thank you, Chair.
You're welcome. And Susan, thank you for the comedic relief, that was awesome.
At my house, when you wanna, when you want somebody to hit the remote control to speed it up and go through that all stuff, you just go zzzzz.
Go for it, Ray.
So for anyone not familiar, this is. This is an aerial of the subject property.
I wasn't here last time.
Oh, no.
We're lucky.
We'll fill you in on the details.
Here's a view of the subject property with the zoning applied. It's interim development, single-family residential zone, residential zone. So some background on this case, for anyone not familiar, there was a series of previous applications for rezoning this property, I guess in the springtime of 2021 roughly, to OPD RS5. That OPD plan had a few ranges of home quantities. I think it finished with 41 detached single-family homes, as well as a senior living facility with 135 bedrooms. That was ultimately denied by the city council. So the subject application, the current application, still seeking that OPD RS5 zoning, but it does not contain that single-family home component that we saw in the previous application. So this current application only contains the senior living facility with a count of 134 bedrooms. The current application includes a dedication of, a proposed dedication of 38.98 acres of land that was previously considered for development. Under this current application would be dedicated as neighborhood open space. Here's a.
Sorry, can you repeat what you just said?
Sure. So the current application contains 38.98 acres of land that, under the previous application, would have been developed upon, but is now going to be proposed for development of neighborhood open space. So here's a kind of pictometry aerial of the subject property, gives you a little bit cleaner look at the property than the kind of standard GIS aerial, gives you a little bit of context of the neighborhood to the east as well. This is a carryover slide, so to speak, from kind of the previous application, but here's topo image of the subject parcel, generally higher elevation to the north of about 780 feet, kind of on the north end, and down to about 710 feet at the south boundary. Here's probably the best look we have at kind of separating the uses within the proposed rezoning applications. You can see the senior living facility in that lot one parcel, or lot, I should say. Kind of on the east, and then you can also see in green the entirety of that outlet, that outlot that would be dedicated as open space. And then here's just kind of a closer up site plan look at that lot that would contain senior living facility. It's pretty much the same kind of site plan that you would have seen in the previous applications. There are some notes here for private open space located within a couple of the kind of courtyard areas. So with respect to zoning, I mentioned that current zoning is interim development, single-family residential. The zoning designation only allows plant-related agriculture by rights. It's intended to be kind of a holding zone for property until either preferred use can be developed or infrastructure can reach the property. The proposed zoning would be OPD RS5 with planned development overlay. Typically, in the RS5 subzone, you, or base zone, rather, you see housing for individual households. It's kind of our least intense or lowest intensity residential zone. But the planned development process does allow for some mixture of uses that you wouldn't typically see in an RS5 zone, and that's kind of what's occurring with this application, with the senior living facility locating within the OPD RS5 zone. That is contingent on some additional approval criteria within the OPD section of the city code, as well as compliance with the city's multifamily site development standards. Staff is proposing a condition that the applicant submit a final plat conforming the proposed lots, the proposed zoning designation. So again, kind of like the, the last agenda item, I'm gonna go through the approval criteria for planned developments. The first of which being that the density and design of the planned development will be compatible and are complementary to adjacent development in terms of land use, building mass and scale, relative amount of open space, traffic circulation, general layout. I'm gonna go into these in a little bit more detail. So with respect to density, the OPD RS5 zone allows for five dwelling units per acre. There is no density calculation for this application because this is a group living use, and those bedrooms are not factored into density calculations. Again, there are 134 bedrooms counted in this senior living facility. With respect to mass and scale, about 69,000-plus square feet in the building footprint. There is kind of a slight change in, in height that's being requested at 42 feet. I think when this application came before this commission in the spring, it was 40 feet. And then I did mention earlier kind of the open space that's on-site. There's about 27,000 square feet of on-site open space. Regarding traffic circulation, so the previous application had Hickory Trail kind of extending to the west from First Avenue and then north to Scott Boulevard. Because there's no proposed housing going in on kind of that outlot A portion of this planned development, the proposed application kind of culminates in a cul-de-sac. So stemming off that cul-de-sac, there'd be two access points along the north side of Hickory Trail for facilitating access within the senior living facility. There will be construction of sidewalks along both sides of the street extension with a five-foot-wide sidewalk on the north side, and then an eight-foot-wide sidewalk along the south side. Staff is also recommending a condition to construct that eight-foot sidewalk east as an off-site improvement all the way to First Avenue, just so that there's a gap in that sidewalk system.
Excuse me, all the way to First Avenue?
Yes, to the east.
Okay, I got it, I got it. Along that condominium building? Yeah, okay.
So with respect to development not overburdening existing streets and utilities, city water and sewer is available to the subject property. We did ask the applicant to submit a, an updated traffic study based on the fact that kind of previous iterations of this application had two points of access from the development, one to First Avenue, one to Scott Boulevard. Staff's concern this time was just primarily, you know, how would that anticipated traffic funnel out to just one access point on the First Avenue with the cul-de-sac being proposed? The returns from that traffic study yielded that level of service at that First Avenue-Hickory Trail intersection would be at a level of service D, which transportation planning staff found acceptable. And just to kind of give you a very high-level overview of that level of service chart again, it kind of goes through A to F, with F being kind of terribly congested and A being kind of free-flowing. So level of service D is kind of in the middle, leaning toward being more congested, but again, at a level that staff is appropriate or felt comfortable with going forward. So no off-site traffic-related improvements are recommended at this time as a result of the development. With respect to views, property values, and privacy, there's 185-foot buffer distance between the senior living facility and the property line for the Hickory Point condominium's property to the east. You know, kind of as was proposed in the previous application, there's kind of considerable landscaping within that 185-foot buffer area with a combination of shade and evergreen trees to sort of soften that transition. Staff is proposing a condition requiring approval of a landscape plan by the city forester prior to issuance of a building permit. And here's just kind of a general look at that landscaping. You can see there's a pretty healthy concentration of shade and evergreen trees along the east side. I know you don't have a legend for the trees, but that's, that's what's being indicated there. And with respect to land use and building types being in public interest, I mentioned that the current application is seeking 42-foot max height on the senior living facility building. The base zone has a maximum height of 35 feet. Staff did find that that requested height waiver met the criteria for that requested height at 42 feet, which basically details that there will be at least 35% of the subject area free of structures, parking, and loading areas. Staff is recommending that there's no building permit issued for any of the subject property until the city council approves a final plat subdividing the subject property to confirm the zoning boundaries established by the zoning ordinance. Regarding neighborhood open space, I've mentioned it a couple times already, but the OPD plan being proposed does show a dedication of 38.98 acres of outlot A to the city as public open space, which would eventually be incorporated into the existing footprint of Hickory Hill Park. The plan does show a trail connection to the south off of the extended Hickory Trail Street, which would connect into the park's kind of trail network, that connection, probably difficult to see on this slide, but is kind of in the southeast corner of the subject property. Parks and Recreation Staff has commented that they support the proposed dedication. With respect to compliance with the comprehensive plan, the Northeast District Plan does promote use of cul-de-sacs and single-loaded streets where appropriate, and the use of ravine and wetland areas as a buffer to the park boundary. So even though the comprehensive plan does kind of contemplate single-family housing coming along the west side of the subject property, staff feels that there are goals being accomplished by the subject OPD plan, mainly in the preservation of natural features through the 38.98 acres of open space dedication, as well as the ability to enhance the interconnectedness of the sidewalk system and trail network, as well as providing some more housing diversity within the Northeast District with the senior living facility. There are some sensitive areas that I want to touch upon, the impacts to which are far less than they were when previous iterations of this were being considered. With respect to wetlands and stream corridors, there are two wetlands and two stream corridors within that outlot A lot. Both the wetlands and stream corridors will be unimpacted, and they will have, the wetlands will have a 100-foot buffer, and the streams will have a 30-foot stream corridor, in addition to a 50-foot-wide stream corridor buffer on each side of the stream corridor. There are some critical slopes being impacted as a result of development on the senior living facility lot. However, only 20% of those critical slopes will be impacted, which is within the allowable threshold of up to 35%. There will be far less impact to woodlands with about preservation of 81% of woodlands. Again, the OPD RS5 designation would allow impact. Again, the OPD RS5 designation would allow impact or disturbance up to 50%. So staff has received some correspondence regarding this rezoning. We've received emails from two residents supporting the rezoning and the inclusion of Outlet A as parkland. Regarding next steps, upon recommendation from this commission, a public hearing would be scheduled for consideration with the council with an anticipated timeline of council setting that public hearing on November 16th for November 30th public hearing. Staff is recommending approval of REZ 21-0008, a proposal to rezone approximately 48.75 acres of land located south of North Scott Boulevard and west of First Avenue from interim development, single-family residential zone to low-density single-family with a planned development overlay, OPD RS5 zone, subject to the following conditions. One, that prior to the acceptance of public improvements corresponding to the subdivision construction of the trail connection as shown in the OPD plan from October 28th, construction of an eight-foot wide sidewalk extending from the subject property's eastern line to First Avenue, prior to issuance of building permit, submission of a landscape plan detailing any proposed landscaping on Lot 1, which shall be approved by the city forester before a building permit is issued, and to be city council approval of a final plat subdividing the subject property to conform to the zoning boundaries established by the zoning ordinance. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ray. Any questions of staff of the commission for staff on this particular application? And I have one to start with.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
So when the developer presented this in September, the use was a different use. And now they are keeping the same building, but they changed the use. Is that right?
So the zoning designation being applied for is the same. It's OPD RS5. The big difference between that application that was fielded earlier by the city is that that included development of single-family residential housing within that area that's described as Outlet A within this application. So that's been removed from this application. This application just contains the senior living facility component.
Okay, so my question was, was the building before a different use and they changed the use regardless of the zoning?
No.
No. The building was the same, but there was a lot of houses that are no longer there.
Right.
It was a senior.
It was, yeah, that's all the same. That part's the same.
Okay. So they just removed the housing?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
And dedicating all that land to the park. I mean, they were dedicating like 12 acres before, 11 something.
Almost 40.
And now it's almost 40.
I have a question, Ray. In Outlet A, is all of the wetlands and the jurisdictional stream, all of that contained in Outlet A?
Yes, it's contained in Outlet A.
Because that was my one, you know, everybody knows I voted for this twice. One of my concerns was the wetlands and the jurisdictional stream because of the invasive species. And with being the responsibility in previous iterations of the homeowners association, and that's pretty much the same as saying that it's not going to be dealt with for the invasive species. So I feel much better that, I feel like the city will manage those, hopefully. You notice I said hopefully, so.
This is a big job.
It's a big job.
Big piece of property, I agree.
Additional questions for staff?
I just have a question. Why all of a sudden did they decide to donate that almost 40 acres to the city? Or is it none of our business?
Because the council wouldn't let them build all that.
Okay, but they wouldn't keep that for themselves and try to do something later? I mean, I think it's great that they're doing that. I think it's the right thing to do. I'm just questioning how their mind changed.
I think the math just got really impossible.
Yeah. Okay, so any more questions for staff on this application? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. The applicant or the applicant's representative, if they'd come forth.
Good evening again. Nick Beddoes, Axiom Consultants, 60 East Court Street, Unit 3. And here on behalf of the applicant for the senior living facility and the property as a whole, yeah, I can answer any questions regarding the, I guess, the submittal or the engineering portions of it. And Andrew here will introduce himself as well.
Hello, everyone. Andrew Alden from AG Architecture, Wauwatosa, Wisconsin. Happy to be here to talk about the building. And we want to share a video that we showed to the Good Neighbor Meeting a few weeks ago. And the video, what you're going to see is, it's about two minutes long. The first two images are the renderings that you've seen before, but then we have a fly around of the property with the building onsite. I want to point out three things. The topography is accurate, so the hills and valleys are accurate. The building size and mass is accurate. The trees and the underbrush, that's just, we didn't do a species specific, so it's just to get the point across. So you're going to start on the northwest corner. You're going to be at ground level, you're going to pop up, you're going to go down the west property boundary looking east, then you're going to dive down to the trail level, and you're going to go along the south, then you're going to pop up and come back up on the east up First Avenue. And the whole point is to show how the building is nestled into the hillside. So we can just go hit play there. So here you are on the northwest corner popping up, and now we're going to turn and look east and move down the west side so you can sort of see the building set there in the distance. And then as we get closer to the south, we're going to go down to the trail level. Once again, trees and vegetation are just representational. So now we're at trail level. We're going to glance a little to your left here. And then we're going to pop up above the trees, and the whole point is that from that south trail, the building is obscured. And then as you pop up and you're going to look north, you'll see the building nicely nestled into the surrounding grade. Then we're going to pop out on First Avenue and go north on First Avenue. And then this is basically at eye level, and as you're moving north on First Avenue, if you look to your left, you will see trees and grass because there's a pretty pronounced grade change there, and the building is tucked down behind it. It's really more evocative if the sound was going on right now, so I could hum along, but it's not the same thing. And then we're going to pop up and have the view down to the south of the building, once again, just tucked into the hillside. And I'll be happy to answer any questions about the building and also answer any questions about our height change requirement from 40 to 42 feet.
That's my specific question, Andrew. The height, if you could just explain it?
Yes, I can explain it.
The two extra feet?
So the two extra feet was requested because of recent changes in best practice for dealing with older adults and mechanical system due to the pandemic. So we got bigger ducts, we have higher air flows, we have filtration systems, and as a result, we need more space between floors in order to fit it. That's pretty much why.
How many people were at your Good Neighbor Meeting?
Was it 18 or, I don't remember, was it?
I think it was 16.
16?
I'm just totally curious of why we went from 135 bedrooms to 134.
I think that might be a typographical error.
Okay.
I was counting in my head. It's 120 units plus one guest suite, but in the AL apartments, there are some two bedrooms. And honestly, sitting there, I couldn't remember if it was 13 two-bedrooms or 14 two-bedrooms.
I'll take that.
One of those numbers is correct and the other one is incorrect.
I like that.
Okay, questions to the commission for Nick or Andrew? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I appreciate that, the topography.
That was amazingly helpful. Can I ask, can I ask how much that costs to do?
No, 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 no.
I'm very serious here. It's going to play into a comment I'm going to make later.
Well, because the owner is probably watching, so it's priceless. My guess is that it was probably a few days' worth of work to get everything accurate.
And how much are we talking?
Probably a few thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
That might get me in trouble later, so thank you.
Is there any member of the public who would like to address the commission on this application? All righty.
Hello, I'm Laura Goddard. I live at 1807 Winston Drive, and I'm speaking tonight as a member and treasurer for the Friends of Hickory Hill Park Board, so hello, everyone. We've had a long journey together. I actually first wanted to say thank you to the city staff, Ann and Ray, and to all of you commissioners. And I know you're like, we've been here a while, don't say thanks, but I actually wanted to start with that piece first for your service in general, which is often behind the scenes. And Commissioner Hench had previously mentioned how there would be meetings at which there were like three people or no people in the audience, so you're often doing that behind the scenes. This has been a long process. You've had lots of questions and passionately involved committee and community members, so thank you in particular. So I buried my lead. I want to say that Friends of Hickory Hill Park supports this latest proposal. We commend Nelson Construction and Development for taking community and ecological input into consideration for this latest design. We are glad that this proposal will both provide needed assisted living facilities and maintain the integrity of an important and beloved natural space. I was glad to see the clarity about the Outlet A, that nearly 40 acres, because we do want to make clear that our support is contingent upon that land being deeded to the city and being incorporated into the park, as was included in the plan presented here. And I just wanted to mention again, you know, I said at the beginning of my comments it was a long process, but I would like to say I don't believe this has been a waste of time because this has been a good example of community involvement and voices being heard. And one last thing I wanted to mention, Commissioner Hench, you mentioned the invasive species, and I do want to make clear that Friends of Hickory Hill Park is committed to continuing our involvement with the space as we have for many years and being active managers. We do regularly deal with invasive species and partner with the Parks and Recreation Department to manage those pieces. So I hope you'll support this proposal. We certainly do. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Laura.
Any other comment from members of the public? You've all been sitting so patiently. Even if you have nothing to say, we'd like to hear from you.
Hi, I'm Archers Callnens. I've seen you all several times virtually, so first time, first time we're all together in the same room. You know, I kind of want to follow up. I guess my perspective is not much different than the Friends of the Hickory Hill Park. I'm just, I'm a regular park user. I was just out there today also, yesterday, over the weekend. You know, I think this new proposal is great. You know, if you remember, the one big debate was in the springtime was about the view shed, and I was kind of looking towards the east from kind of the picnic table on the Western Prairie and you kind of look across the little valley and then, and it just made me really, made me very happy that, you know, that wonderful view will continue and be intact. I think that's a huge part of kind of just the splendor of that park is having those kind of views in what's otherwise, you know, we're becoming a pretty densely populated, you know, little residential area, and having something like that is spectacular, and this proposal will preserve that. And that'll be here forever, so that's fantastic. The, you know, some of the, just other very brief, you know, things that I was also always, you know, I think the addition of that land to the park will actually have a nice potential access to the park from Scott Boulevard, which I think is really nice coming up from that way. So again, having that, having that 38-acre lot which may become a prairie, or I'm not sure what this plans the city would have for it, or just walking trails, you know, is a great access. Just one final thing, so again, I'm 100% in favor. I am, and this might be just a technical reason that, you know, I'm just not at all an expert on issues of zoning. I'm just curious why we're still calling for a zoning that's going to include single-unit development or single-unit housing development when there isn't going to be any in the current plan and why we're putting that in the, why we're putting that in the zoning. And if that's just some technicality, that that's just the way it works, you know, fine, but that's all I have to say. So thanks again. I hugely am supportive of this current plan.
Can he sign in? I don't know who he is.
Well, we know who he is, Archers.
Any other comments from any members of the public? Second call, last call? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion for approval of this application?
Still moved.
Motion by Craig, second by Martin. Discussion. I'll go ahead and start off. Just a couple notes here. I think the real positives from this is the senior living facility is in the application. I think this is strongly needing the community. I support it 100%. I'm very happy the city now will have the opportunity to manage the wetlands and takes in control the invasive species. That's such a serious problem and that I think it'll make this area more fruitful. I don't think anybody can deny that it's a very positive to increase Hickory Hill Park by 21%. I hope the city can afford to manage it and spend money in there. People have to remember, that means property taxes, that money just doesn't magically appear. I know that's not part of our consideration, but as a citizen of Iowa City, I just think that. The negatives are, when I first saw this, I said to myself immediately, I'm going to vote no because of the, when I saw the cul-de-sac, because I'm just like, I'm never going to vote for a cul-de-sac. I've shot my mouth off every time about cul-de-sacs because I really believe in complete streets and the city's philosophy on that. But then as soon as I saw the map and saw that really is essentially an access drive for the senior living facility, then I backed off. So I just want people, if they heard me shoot my mouth off before about cul-de-sacs, explain that one. I am still concerned about lack of housing diversity, certainly the senior facility that is housing diversity, but I'm talking about family, multifamily. I think that's a loss for the community. We always have to keep in mind that by increasing all housing types, there's just a chain reaction. If you build a new house, somebody moves out of a house, they move into the new house, and it causes theoretically, it's increasing the total supply, which over time, in a normal healthy market, would supply and demand reduce prices. Iowa City has always been very odd because it's such a high-demand place, but if people question why I've always supported these applications, because I'm 100% supporter of affordable housing, and we have to make hard choices to add to our housing diversity, and a lot of people will not be happy with that, but there's only one way for that to happen, is we got to build places for people to live, period, even if we don't really like it in our neighborhood. And as a person on the south side with a lot of housing around me that I don't care for, I suck it up because it's my responsibility as a citizen to participate for the welfare of the entire city. So I will support this application.
I've supported the senior housing portion of this from day one, and, you know, I said, I hope that's where my kids put me when the day comes. So I'm a neighbor to Hickory Hill Park, and I love the park, and I'm very pleased to see it grow. Thanks.
Any other further discussion?
I'm holding my breath. I'm waiting. Come on.
We're going to drag it out. I just, I'm going to try to keep it short because, yeah, I got it. I just want to point out that the developer has given up 80% of their land to get this to go through. They have spent tens of thousands of dollars satisfying the community, satisfying this commission. commission, satisfying the city council, including spending thousands of dollars on a fly-through video just so we could see how-
Are you saying I won't be able to afford to live in that senior facility?
I don't know. Including spending thousands of dollars, creating a fly-through video just so we could see how much the roof did or did not stick above the tree line.
Not for us, for the whole community. Everyone's watching.
We spent, they spent thousands of dollars to satisfy the community's desire to see how high that roof stuck above the tree line. My point is, there's a reason builders are not building in Iowa City, and they're building in all the communities around us. And those things I just mentioned are part of it. And I think we as a commission, we as a council, we as a community, have to understand that, that there are ramifications, and if we don't grow, our taxes will grow to maintain the services that we are accustomed to today. That's all.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of this application?
I have a few things to say.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry. I just wish developers would start considering more sustainability when they design the buildings, because I can see in the renders that all the facades have the same amount of windows. There is not a study of the sun, there is not a study of the facade, there's not an energy study, and this is why they end up asking for more height. It shouldn't be necessary. There are other ways where you can reduce the ducks and make the building more sustainable. There are mental illnesses that elder people have, older people have, that make them sensitive to light. So when you have people that will be living there that could potentially have dementia or Alzheimer or illnesses like that, there's an opportunity to make some of the windows smaller in the facades that need, you know, that have a different impact, because it's not, when you're designing a building, the facades have different energy, energy consumption, there is a difference in how they affect the building energy. Also, I think is concerning to me, I understand that the whole thought was like donated, so that's a great thing. The renderings and the fly-through are very easy to make right now with the technology that we have, so it's not so impressive. It's something useful, but it's something that everybody's using right now and doing. Yeah, and I was worried about the impacted woodland in that area. But I will be supporting this project, but I hope to see more projects in the future that are sustainable. I know we cannot require that, because if a state law that doesn't let the city require buildings to be sustainable, but I think it would be nice if developers start doing that on their own.
All right, thank you, Maria. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of this application signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the motion passes unanimously. Item number seven, consideration of meeting minutes, October 21, 2021. Were there any major additions or corrections to those minutes?
Move approval.
Motion by Nolte, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Townsend, discussion? No discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the motion passes unanimously. Number eight, planning and zoning information. Ann?
No updates tonight.
Bless you. Is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Motion by Townsend, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Martin. Discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously, we're adjourned.